Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, February 14th. I'd like to ask per call and order.
Mr. Kaling?
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson, present. Mr. Quadro?
Present.
Dr. Janal Peterson-Camel?
Yeah.
And Mayor P R D. Do.
I'd like everybody to stand for the question of the meeting.
A pleasure to lead this to apply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this fold, in this league, and just its pride.
Rich, your mission statement is here?
Mission statement. Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School is to chair students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
At this time, I ask if there's any participation by the public?
That would be me. So this is getting taped, right?
Yes.
Recorded. My name is Christina Peterson. I'm a resident of North Hampton and my property almost abuts the Smith Farm Fields. And over the past several decades, I've worked with the school, Tim Smith in particular, to try to manage the dog walking activity there. And I took a walk with Julie last year and we came up with some solutions to help manage the property. And Rich, I understand you're the property committee now?
Yes, chairman, chairperson.
Okay. I had some written comments to give you today, but my printer went on the blink. And I know you have a lot of work to do tonight, so I won't go through my written comments. I will send them to Rich, and if Rich wants to distribute them to the rest of you, I guess that would be your decision. There's a lot of overuse there now. You know, the land is just being loved to death. And I think that, you know, the train left the station a long time ago as to whether or not dogs would be walked there. They are going to be walked there. But I think that there's some work we can do on all the erosion that's taking place there. And so I have some suggestions for that. So, Rich, I will send this to you. And maybe we can set up a walk or meeting with Tim at the farm.
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have an ally, which is Chris, part of the trustees. Please.
Lisa Clausen, who facilitates the policy group on tradeswomen issues, reached out to me and our guided staff about holding an information session, especially for girls and non-binary students, to learn more about careers in the union building trades, which offer excellent benefits in starting pay. She'll be here on March 9th and 15th, and I encourage her to contact North Hampton High School as well. On a different topic, last week Massachusetts civil rights advocates filed a complaint with the U.S. Department of Education, charging that selective admission standards in vocational schools discriminate against low-income students, students of color, English language learners, and special education students, who are accepted at lower rates than their counterparts not in these groups. Admissions criteria is an issue that I have been closely examining in my role on the Vocational Technical Education Advisory Council, and of course, Dr. Lincoln Hooker and his team have been for several years. There are roughly twice as many applicants to vocational technical schools than there are slots available each year statewide. Schools currently select students using criteria like middle school grades and attendance record, but they've been encouraged to consider a lottery instead so that all applicants have an equal chance of acceptance and enrollment. Dr. Lincoln Hooker has spoken to us before about Smith Vocational's attendance policy, and I know he will again. We may decide to make changes without waiting for a mandate from the federal government. If anyone wants to know more about this important issue, please don't hesitate to contact me, and I invite anyone who has thoughts about it to share them with me.
Thank you. Rich, who?
Property Subcommittee Report. We've finalized our relationship with Deets Architects, who was hired to do a feasibility study for the rebuild of the horticultural building. And we just received the construction cost estimate by estimating service. And currently, we're about, well, built into this cost estimate is considerable contingency because the start date would be April 24th, and that appears to be reasonable. Backtrack of stuff, though, next Wednesday, we're opening bids for the RP for OPM services, which is required per the Mass School Building Authority of a project this size. Project will be at least $5 million and upwards to possibly seven plus, which we can't really afford at this time. So we're looking at the next phase, and hopefully, next week, we'll be identifying who will be hiring as an OPM to help put the process together in terms of going out to bids for design services.
Rich, can you tell her by what OPM means?
OPM, owner's, owner's project manager. And this is required, like I said, by the Mass School Building Authority. That will be, we, we're not sure if we're going to have to reach out to them for funding. We're hoping to fund this in-house in some way or another. We have other projects down the road that we will need to reach out to MSBA. And currently, like I said previously, built into this current construction budget of 7.432 includes approximately $1 million of contingencies, which some of that will probably be spent, but we're certainly hoping we don't need that sort of contingency amount. And part of it is escalation costs. We're targeting at 6.4% if the construction started spring 2024, and 12% for design and estimating contingency. The report we have, the construction estimate we have to date, has been very detailed, has been very well thought out, based on the conceptual drawings that Deets Architects had prepared during our process, essentially about since June. We got them on board right away. We know this is a priority, and we're trying to keep moving this forward. So next week will be our first step in really starting to move it forward to reality. So that's our main, our main priority on the property committee. But we have a lot of on-campus projects that Tim, our facilities director, can bring you up to date on. Well, we'll get to that later on. I will just focus on the horticulture building at this time and let Tim bring you up to date on the on-campus projects.
Thank you. So I'd like to just say welcome to everybody here tonight. We did have a great subcommittee meeting today, and we're starting to get down to the brass tacks on getting a new building built and the taking down of the old building. But the thing is that we are asking for everybody's input on this. We're not one person making this decision. I want to thank everybody that is on the subcommittee meeting, the teachers here, the instructors here, the administration that has done just a lot of hard work to pull this all together, and there's a lot more to do. But I just want to have it on the record, my thanks as chairperson about that. At this time, may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 17th Board of Trustees meeting?
So who?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Joe, adult education's part of it?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Lorena Turner, who's our Adult Education Director.
Okay, thank you. I have a little paper here for everybody to share. And I'll be quick. So what I did is I just listed the courses that we're offering this spring, medical assisting, electrical code and theory, home repair, oil heat tech, phlebotomy, small engine repair, woodworking, and a welding course. I've also included the number of students that are enrolled in each class, and if you look at the bottom, small engine repair, woodworking, welding, we're still enrolling, actively enrolling, so that number should go up. And what I did is I kind of just totaled what we made with everything taken out, like teacher's stipends, books, certification exams if the class had them, all sorts of things. And so we ended with 78,814 in 60 them. I also, this is the highest in the spring semester that we've done so far since I've been here. So that was really great. But I also wanted to add that we, we are also bringing in with the grant that, that we got for the Culinary Arts CTI Grant. We are currently, we started the first cohort with 10 students. January 17th was their first day, and they're going to go until June 13th. And with that, you know, what goes to the adult ed, there's $3,500 of startup oversight, which we actually sent out for four. But in total, for this one cohort, it will amount to 10,000, 10,500 additional on top of the 3,500. Those are just oversight hours of the whole program for this cohort. And then in September, we'll run two, and we'll have that same amount minus the startup because we already did the startup. We are also running the Nurse Aid Program, which we partner with Center for New Americans. This is their sixth year in doing the grant. This is their final year. They've decided to not continue any longer. They found some struggles with the population that they're serving in passing the Nurse Aid exam. Our teacher does very good with getting them to pass the clinical part, the practical, but they have trouble passing the written part because of their language barrier, and so they've decided to discontinue it. And this will be the final year. I put down a projected based on last year. Last year, there were 100 oversight hours that I charged, and so that amounts to $7,000. I don't know if it'll be that much this year, but it'll be a ballpark. So I just kind of wanted to put that in there as well. And...
Do you want to talk about, could you just expand on the CTI Grant, what it's focused on?
Sure.
And also the cost for students?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the CTI Grant is a grant that we apply to with the Workforce Board, and the main purpose of that is basically getting people who are unemployed or underemployed trained in a technical area and out there working. So this is like a start to finish of recruitment of who's eligible, which we did, we recruited 10. We actually had a lot of applicants and we had to cut it down to 10. And those 10 are currently coming to class Monday through Thursday nights every week all the way up until June. It includes an externship, a 40-hour externship, which is actually paid through the grant, and employment assistance. So I work and partner, I partner up with Mass Hire Franklin County, and there's three people that I work with over there. We are closely watching their attendance and success in the whole program, along with, we will be getting them ready. Around March, we're going to be starting them with career services such as writing a resume. We're going to help them how to do a cover letter. We're going to help them with interviewing skills, all sorts of how to get a job, get the job that we are hoping for in this career. And we're actually going to connect them with employers that are actually have said to us, yes, we are interested in your students. So there's so many people involved in the success of these students going through the program and a lot of support for them. We are very happy with the students that we recruited, and we feel very confident that they're going to be successful. We're tracking them. We have a database that we enter all the information in that I've been doing that will, you know, they will, the state will be booking at success for this. So the grant total was, that we rewarded was about 150, but that's for two cohorts. And that includes everything from their uniforms, shoes, knife sets, and books, and a variety of different things that they get in this program, along with certification exams. All of that is all paid for through the grant. It's all-inclusive.
There's no cost to the student?
There is zero cost to the student. This is all funded through the grant that we received.
Do you keep a record of where we, all of the students live?
Yes. So we had to register them into this database called Apricot.
Not just the culinary arts students, but all of the participants in the education program?
Oh, yes, yes. So I track all of that as well.
I'd be interested to see where they live.
Okay.
If they are concentrated in North Hampton, or if they're in other communities, and what the relationship is with our sending districts?
Sure.
Because that's another benefit to the school.
Absolutely. Believe it or not, a lot of our adult ed students in the medical, which would include medical assisting and phlebotomy, come from Holyoke or surrounding towns in Holyoke because we are accepted with the WIA program, the WIOA program. So a lot of them are coming here, being paid through the WIOA. And most of people that are sent from, from Mass Hire are, the Holyoke office is sending them, and so those are the surrounding towns. We also have Greenfield. We work with Greenfield. And we actually work with Springfield, too. So Springfield sends us people, and so doesn't Greenfield. So all those surrounding towns in Greenfield, and all the surrounding towns in Springfield, and in, and Holyoke are sent to us. So, but electrical, they're just all over the state as well. Well, mostly western, yeah. And we also receive fund aid, well, I should say, we're also accepted in the Workforce Training Fund program. So there's a couple of classes that I've sought out to get approval for, which I am approved now for, the Oil Heat Technician Course. What the Workforce Training Fund does is, it actually works with employers. So what I do is when someone is interested in, let's say, the Oil Heat Technician Course, I ask them, who's your employer? And then I connect with the employer, and I let the employer know, if you pay the tuition, then you can fill out this application, the express program. In order to fill it out, they have to have a certificate of good standing. They fill it out, there's 21 days that they have to approve it, and once they're approved, then what happens is they pay the tuition upfront to me, so I already have the tuition. But at the end of the course, they submit for reimbursement, and they get reimbursed 100%.
Wow.
And so I just did it for the welding course that we're offering, which starts in March, and we actually got someone. We got an employer, some tool-making company actually applied for this express program. They got accepted, and now the student is going to be coming through that, the employer paying, but getting 100% reimbursed. If the company is less than 100 employees, 100 employees or less, they get reimbursed 100%. If they are bigger than that, they get reimbursed 50%. So just knowing that this is like kind of a game changer for a lot of the employers. We're getting more and more people coming in and taking our courses. So as you can see, like the Oil Heat Technician Course did really well this semester, whereas last semester, we kind of just cut even. But this semester, I had time to connect with employers, and we were able to have those employers pay for their employees. And what my hope is, is with the welding course, to keep offering it at least one semester a year, and reach out to these employers and let them know, if you send your employee here for this course, then, you know, you can get reimbursed 100%. So that really, and we actually got WIA to accept welding, too, this semester. So we, I have someone in the WIO, I call it WIO, but it's the WIOA program. So now, just knowing what our resources are and reaching out and getting this all together really does make a huge difference in the amount of people we can attract.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I just want to highlight Lorena. I know Dr. Lincoln Hooker probably would, too, but, you know, when we started this program, we were about $150,000 in the hole when Lorena took over. And because she's able to go out and build these relationships and understand the programs that are available and assist us with, you know, writing grants collectively for these things, she really has made us a huge success.
And it's such a wonderful resource for our region.
Absolutely. And there's so many people who want the trades, to get trained on the trades. Not everybody's lucky enough to come here as a high schooler and graduate. So, you know, here we are with people who are in their 20s, their 30s, even 40s and 50s, saying, I want to learn this trade, and we have those opportunities. And a lot of times, the barrier is, how do I pay for it? And we're trying to break that barrier as well. And, you know, I didn't know, when I came here, I didn't really know a lot about electrical. I didn't know a lot about plumbing. I didn't know anything about welding. And, you know, it's just really asking a lot of questions to those instructors and, you know, understanding what it takes to get someone to work in the field. So I've been learning, and I'm sure there's more to learn. But it's key because answering those phones, answering the phone when someone calls saying, I'm interested in electrical, having that information about, you know, do you understand it's a four-year commitment? And also, not only is it that you come to school, because they think that they're going to, you know, have hands-on with electrical. It's not. It's all code, you know? So they have to understand that, and they also have to obtain an apprenticeship. So just understanding that whole process has helped me to guide people, whether or not this is the right program for them, for what we offer.
That's awesome.
I just want to piggyback what Mr. Bianca just said. Just thinking back when Lorena, when you first started, your background's phlebotomy.
Right, phlebotomy, medical assisting.
And when you first started, you know, we were in the hole, and you had an industry expertise in one particular area. And I just keep envisioning this like exponential growth chart, you know? So, you know, that growth was a little slow at first because you were learning and you were still new, and now it's almost vertical. To the point where I just want to caution the board and make the board aware of what I'm going to keep encouraging you to do, is that Lorena's only one person, you know? So you hold me a port of focus on III, which is, you deserve all the credit in the world.
Thank you.
But at some point, that exponential vertical growth is going to begin to plateau out because you're just one person.
Right.
You need help.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've been talking about in the system for Lorena, when you see the profit, you have more than enough revenue to support help. So as we begin to plateau, I think you now see another increase. So again, it's all because of you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And I'm also encouraged about, you know, if we do continue to apply for grants, these grants do help us add, and so that kind of gives us a good security of, you know, this is, you know, what we can expect to make. Sometimes it's a surprise, you know? It was a surprise to me that we made almost 80, and, you know, but having the, but that's not even adding in the grants, but having those grants really do help, really use that buffer.
You have that knowledge, and the fact that Hampton County Mass Hire has reached out to us to host the Advanced Manufacturing Program.
Right.
When you think of just a population hub, Hampton County is the most populous county in Western Mass, yet they can't find a location for advanced manufacturing, so they call, you know, they call Ghostbusters, you know, they call it educational.
Right.
So again, it's just another reinforcement of what's happening here at Smith, so good job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I also want to compliment you because I've been around long enough between being on board trustees as well as attending the school, and I've watched the growth that we brought adult education back, and the trustees were able to fund it from the GECO. As Joe said, it was an all in the beginning, but between everybody's, you stayed with it. And today, we're recognized by the Commonwealth Massachusetts about the adult ed and the job that you've done. So the public relations for our school is fabulous, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. And I hope adult ed is here to stay.
It is.
Yeah.
It's my number.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lorena. Go for your research and progress. Good luck.
It's kind of difficult to see from where you're sitting, but some of our typical highlights over the past month, and as a reminder, sort of has a few bolded items, some metallicized items to highlight what's happening around the superintendent goals along with some of our equity focus over the past month. So as the board knows, I'm involved with the MIA with the TMC, big acronym, but again, as the Tournament Management Committee, through the MIA, which is the Athletic Association at the state. I had a meeting back in the middle of January. I'll actually be down there at the office tomorrow for another meeting. The MAVA CFS, that's the Connecting for Success Conference, which is a big MAVA professional conference that we host in late June, typically after we get out of school in June, depending on the particular winter. I'm on the steering committee this year as the MAVA president. We had a first meeting a couple, a few weeks ago now, and just talking about the theme, looking at how do we get presentations, how do we get the vendors for a vendor fair? So there's a chance just to meet the players across the state, and it does promise to be a very well-worth conference. We sort of had a downturn during the pandemic. We tried to have an online virtual conference one particular year, which was kind of difficult. Last year, we were back in person for the first time. I think this spring will be a very large conference. And then you look outside, there's no snow, and it's going to be 60 degrees this, you know, this week. And it seems like we've had no snow days. But we had this bad thing going on around the weekend. We had a snow day on that Friday, a snow day on that Monday, even though there was very little snow. So I was a little disheartened by that, that we had sort of wasted snow days, but it was the right decision. And again, for the public, just to understand, when we at Smith make a decision about a snow day, it's not necessarily what's happening in the confines of the city of North Hampton. It's really what's happening in Western Mass, and more importantly, what's happening with all of the sending districts. Because as a reminder, our non-resident students who have transportation from the non, from any other community outside of North Hampton, if that particular community has a snow day, that town will not transport the students to Smith. So at some point, it doesn't make sense educationally to have a school day here at Smith if 50 or 60% of our student body won't be in school. So while North Hampton may be raining, we may have to cancel school if we have so many towns from the hill towns closing. And after those two snow days, I had to go down to Devens, and I was traveling Group Two, and you look at the snow up in the northern part of Massachusetts, it made me feel more comfortable that the snow days were worthwhile because a lot of our families were dealing with snow. So I just wanted to put that out there. Speaking of going to Devens on the 24th, so again, coming out of the back-to-back snow days, the MAVA officers, our tradition is to speak to Leadership One, which is a leadership cohort put on by MAVA, and it's basically teaching and training current teachers on how to be our future leaders within vocational ed. So we go down there, and we talk to the students about what leadership... I know I'm learning a lot, reflecting a lot. So you'll see a lot of mindfulness sessions through the updates. I want to thank the mayor. The evening of the 31st is the annual tradition that the mayor meets with the city council, Northampton School Committee, and now with the new bylaws, the Smith Vocational Board and Trustees. It's sort of a joint conference. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we're still virtual. Hopefully we'll be back in person relatively soon. And I just want to thank the mayor for being very clear, logical, talking about the current state of affairs in the city. I always learn something. One thing I just want to point out, I pointed out to my leadership team afterwards, the, I'll be the first one to admit, the promise or the dreaming of a lot of revenue from the cannabis industry. And we saw this big spike. My hand was definitely getting into the cookie jar as far as potential revenue to support the school. But then after that, the initial year, you'll see the revenue keeps dropping and dropping and dropping to the point of, I'm not expecting a whole lot. So that was my big takeaway. I'm sure there's a lot more takeaways that the board can share. Anyways, it always sounds good, but then when the money doesn't dry, it kind of dries up, then what do we do? So that was the 31st. We had another mindfulness session. Dr. Spencer Robinson has mentioned the issues statewide around admissions. So as the MAVA president, I was part of a meeting with attorney Paige Tobin. So MAVA has contracted her services to represent the association around the admissions regulations and the suit that was submitted at the federal level. Yes, the concern is, as selective criteria, and as a reminder for the board, the selective criteria is a federal law. So it does allow vocational schools to use selective criteria with the premise that we need to identify the students who can benefit from our services. So who can benefit from a vocational education, we are allowed to use selective criteria. However, the selective criteria cannot be biased against any protected classes. So that's the issue, okay? The argument from the vocational world is that we want to ensure that students who are, that enroll in a vocational education, they have the basic level of competency so they can read complex technical material, they can follow basic safety procedures. When you walk around campus and you see a 15-year-old up in a tree with a chainsaw, you want to make sure that they can follow basic safety procedures. They're in an advanced manufacturing machine shop and they have a quarter of a million dollar CNC lathe or mill purchased by taxpayer money, we want to make sure that all fingers stay intact and nobody gets hurt. So there's definitely a need to review applicants to make sure that students are able to benefit from an education. We also want to make sure that we're not biased and we're not hindering the opportunity for somebody to get in who has the desire to pursue an education. As Dr. Spencer Robinson also noted, popularity of book ed is through the roof. We have basically twice as many applicants as we have seats. So from the vocational side, our argument is, let's not worry about the criteria. The criteria, no matter how you shift criteria, or even if we implement a lottery, which I'm not opposed to necessarily, the bottom line is, there's always going to be students who are in and there are going to be students that are out, no matter how we slice the bread. My hope and my dream would be that we're not saying no to anybody. If you want the opportunity to get an education at a vocational school, why say no? The solution, we need to create more seats. And that's from the vocational side, how do we create more seats? Obviously, there's a dollar figure attached to that. But at the end of the day, are we discriminating against protected classes? One challenge that we have through the admissions policy, just again, so the board is aware, it is a blind admissions process. We don't know if the applicant is male, female, black, white, special ed, non-special ed. We don't know any of that during the admissions policy. So when the data comes out that we submit to DESI and DESI says that certain schools are biased against certain protected classes, that particular school didn't know that during the admissions process. This is information that comes to late after the fact. At Smith, I want to applaud Joe, I want to applaud Goddard. What's the particular qualification that we advertise in now?
Public Latino.
Okay, so our hope is, we are trying to get the word out to various communities who may not have the information to begin with, which is the other argument that we have within the vocational world, is the information. If families don't have the knowledge that they can't apply to a vocational school, how are they going to apply? So how do we get the word out to all families that this is an opportunity? So that's a struggle that we're having. So I'm on defense, whether I support selective criteria or lottery, to be, you know, just putting my opinion out there. I think more research has to be done. It is a very hot topic across the state right now, so you're spot on with that. So anyways, but yes, we do have an attorney who's sort of guiding us through this process. I already mentioned Unit H negotiations. We had a second session recently. Last Thursday, again, applaud the mayor. We had another city department head meeting, a lot of great information. It was nice just to A, see people and B, hear what's going on across the city. And I'm going to sort of, I know there's an agenda item later on about vehicle. And it was comforting in a way, because we've been struggling to look for hybrid vehicle. That's going to be your agenda item later. But to hear the struggle in other departments that they just can't get the hands-on hybrid or electric vehicles, it boggles my mind. It's a bigger issue than just Smith vocational. Last Friday, I think it was last Friday, this is bolded because I just want to give you an update on some of the programs that are happening around here. So criminal justice, they're doing this MRE cooking contest, basically. So if you're unfamiliar with an MRE, that's a made ready to eat. It's basically a package of astronaut food that you eat if you're in the military or whatnot, security perhaps. And the challenge for the students, they were assigned to different teams. They were given four different MRE meals. So each meal is a different theme, okay? And they were tasked to take those four MREs, combine them into a three-course meal. So we had to have an appetizer, a main dish, entree, and a dessert, and a drink. And it was quite interesting. I've had plenty of MREs in my time and by far, these were the best MREs I've ever had. So it was great to watch the students sort of learn, you know, the science and this what they might be eating someday if they're in the military, it was great to see in the classroom. So yesterday, we had the opportunity to host, this was a department event meeting. So one of the visions and initiatives that the department event had this year was to create these regional CCTE meetings. So CCTE is career and college, college and career medical education. It's their office at the department. They wanted to go around the state and get our input about what's happening within our schools, priorities that we have, issues that we're having, any disconnects between us as a school and the department. And they were struggling to find a host for Franklin, New Hampshire County, so I raised my hand. So we hosted the meeting yesterday. Unfortunately, it was a relatively small meeting. It was just us here at Smith, you know, our friends from Franklin County Tech. There were also the tenants, along with the individuals from, from the department. So we had a great meeting in the restaurant. I want to thank Oliver for providing us a great lunch. And it was just an open and honest dialogue, to be perfectly honest. All the topics that we've been talking about, about admissions and our struggles to find teachers, plus many more topics we were able to address.
Liz Bennett.
One of the associate commissioners. Nicole Smith, who's the next level up as far as the chain of command and, I'm forgetting her name, she's a fellow in the department, so those three individuals. This morning, we had our most recent mindfulness session and as Mr. Riquelde said, we had a property subcommittee a couple hours ago. I'm not going to get into too many of the details. Mr. Riquelde did a great job updating from the property subcommittee, but I just wanted two other updates, I wanted more to know. One, last month, I mentioned how I sent a letter and I had a phone call conversation with Smith College about potential financial support from the college. February 1st, we were very lucky to receive a letter back from Smith College and they are awarding the school $152,000. It's going to be split over two years. So it's a $75,000 donation this year, $75,000 for next year for part of the rebuild initiative. So I do want to thank Smith College. I'm drafting a personal thank you to them. I think it's worthwhile. And they've asked for an invoice, basically, so we will invoice them for the donation over the next two years. So that will be the process. I just want to again publicly thank Smith College and their assistance and support. Now, just to give the board another update as the overall financial picture, I know the numbers sort of become, you know, kind of gloss over, but I think the board needs to know where we're seeing financially. So as a reminder, insurance settlement for the structure, you know, the actual fire of the building, we received just over a million dollars. The last equipment tools insurance settlement was $421,000. The first skills capital grant dedicated to Bianca and Ms. Shardea wrote, we were able to apply $600,000 of that grant towards the rebuild. The more recent second skills capital grant, the larger grant, $3.5 million of the $5 million we can apply towards the rebuild. The economic bond bill, I want to continue to thank Senator Comerford. Right now, this is still in the works, okay? This is not off the table. We are looking at an amendment to the economic bond bill in the amount of $275,000. I just mentioned the donation from Smith College, that's $150,000. And as of the most recent donations that we receive from just individuals in the community and other groups, that's just shy of $40,000. You add all of that up and as of this moment, we have $6,026,109.31. Our earmarks board to rebuild. It blows my mind. I was hoping to be somewhere in the $5 million. You know, we've now crossed over into the $6 million range. But here's the issue, okay? Mr. Riquelde just mentioned earlier, okay, we finally got the official, again, it's an estimate. We're still early in the phase, but if we use up even all of those contingency, okay, lines, the total we're looking at right now is 7.4 billion. So again, we're close to $1.5 million short still. That's if we use all of the contingency needs. If we're able to save some money, that 1.4, you know, make it down close to $2 million. The bottom line is, as a board, we'll have some serious conversations that we'll have to have in, in the near future of how we're going to close that gap. So that's the current financial package. So a lot of good news, but we still have some difficult conversations that we still have to have and decisions to make on closing that gap. I promised last month I'd give you my priorities for the budget. My plan, you're going to see looking ahead, you know, next month, my plan is to present to the board a draft FY '24 budget that will give you a chance to digest our proposal, have a conversation and gives us time. We have an April meeting already scheduled, which is within the timeline of the city, to have a final approved budget sent to the mayor in time to follow the bylaws. But just to give the board an update of where I'm standing with my leadership team, some of our priorities. Priority number one is, is to continue to support all of our academic and vocational programs. Everything is important. We want to make sure that none of our academics, none of our programs suffer through any budgets, budget decisions. We want to continue to focus on the multiple skills capital grant implementations, i.e. we need to support our administrative team, our facilities team. There's a lot of management going on right now to deal with all of the, all of the grants. It's great news. It's a lot of money we're spending, a lot of great things for the students. It takes a lot of time and effort. Obviously, top priority is to continue to focus on the horticulture building rebuild. I'm advocating that we add another full-time assistant principal, okay? We are now pushing 600 students as of next year. There's just, the management of the student body has to be top priority. And I know with Mr. Bianca and I started here nine years ago, eight years ago, I think the concern from the faculty was sort of the school climate and culture and sort of that, just the student experience. And I think we did a great job over the last seven or eight years, sort of creating a more positive culture and climate for the students, which obviously improves the relationships between students and the staff. And my fear is, as we continue to expand the student body, if we don't have the support to manage the student body, we may begin to revert back to some more negative behaviors, which we don't want. So having a second assistant principal will definitely help ensure that doesn't happen. As you know, this fiscal year, we advocated for, and we thank the board, to support an additional .5 FTE for animal science. This is the gradual expansion of our animal science program. I want to advocate that that .5 individual becomes a full FTE in animal science. So we go from two and a half teachers to three teachers in animal science. And lastly, I just want to again, thank you to the board, allowing us to expand our farm tech model. This is to really focus on, again, animal science, the overall farm operation, trying to improve the operation down there and the communication between the instructors and the facility side, the farm tech side, operation side of the farm. Historically, we've had three farm techs. We created a new model this year where we're splitting that farm tech role into two different lanes. We have a farm tech lane and an animal care tech lane. So some individuals, we'll be more focused on the care of the animals, working with the educational staff on what animals have to be ready for the teaching and learning of the school. That's the animal care lane. The farm tech lane is the more of the operations of the farm, making sure that the facilities are maintained, make sure that the hay is getting, getting done and just sort of the grounds of the farm is being kept updated. That model, we're going from three individuals. Our goal was to go to four individuals. We're working on that right now. So we have two individuals on the farm tech lane, two individuals on the animal care tech lane. And my, my vision and my priority would be that we maintain that for next year as well. So those are right now, on February 14th, the priorities for next year. So we'll be talking more, you know, next month, as you see a budget. NEAC, this is just to give the board an update. So most of you know, I've gotten into this tradition of special reports submitted to the NEAC typically twice a year. So I had to submit a letter back in the fall, just updating the association on current events and what's happening here at the school to try to keep ourselves afloat and continue to move forward in 21st century. On January 23rd, I received a letter back to the NEAC. They met back in the fall, they reviewed my special report, and they did vote to accept without change our membership status. So that in essence, we remain in the warning, but they're not pulling the accreditation away from us. They gave us several noteworthy accommodations, all the great work we're doing here. And yes, I have to submit another special report this spring. They want me to highlight some recommendations. This is the first time, I was telling Ms. Carter earlier today, this might be the first time that the conversations that they're asking me to report on are things that we're already doing and things that are truly attainable. Normally, they want me to report on the governance model. What am I doing to work on the governance model? That's next to impossible for one person to deal with the governance model. So I do appreciate that the association sort of stepped back and they're allowing us to focus on things that we can try to work on, which is, continue to look at the skills capital grants, which is, keep working on rebuilding the horticulture building, which is, working with city officials in the, in the department head on various funding options, other capital assessments, other ways to find money, in essence. And finally, to continue to work with outside groups. And they reference Friends of the Farm, I mentioned Friends of the Farm in one of my reports. How do we work with outside groups so we can continue to expand the animal science program? So again, things that we're already talking about, we're already working on, so I can easily put on there.
I found the issue with NEA scores are physical facilities. Is that right or wrong?
That's partly, yes. But then the bigger picture, how do we solve the physical plants if the financial stability is not stable?
And if we don't have a path for the current governance model to find ones? How many schools have to do a special report?
That's a good question. So I just, this is not a formal motion, okay? I figured when, a few months ago, the board voted on the school to create This is the first time, I was telling Ms. Carver earlier today, this might be the first time that the conversations that they're asking me to report on are things that we're already doing and things that are truly attainable. Normally, they want me to report on the governance model. What am I doing to work on the governance model? That's next to impossible for one person to deal with the governance model. So I do appreciate that the association sort of stepped back and they're allowing us to focus on things that we can try to work on, which is continue to look at the skills capital grants, which is keep working on rebuilding the horticulture building, which is working with city officials in the department head on various funding options, other capital assessments, other ways to find money in essence. And finally, to continue to work with outside groups. And they reference Friends of the Farm. I mentioned Friends of the Farm in one of my reports. How do we work with outside groups so we can continue to expand the animal science program? So again, things that we're already talking about, we're already working on, so I can easily put on that.
I found the issue with NEAC was our physical facility. Is that right or wrong?
That's partly, yes. But then the bigger picture, how do we solve the physical plants if the financial stability is not stable?
And if we don't have a path forward with the current governance model to find this, it does seem a question. How many schools have to do a special report?
That's a good question. So I just, this is not a formal motion, okay? I figured out when, a few months ago, the board voted on the school to create name tags, magnetic name tags for all city department heads. And I want to remind the board of that, thank the board. And our advanced manufacturing program is excited to fulfill that quote. So the machine shop, advanced manufacturing gave me some prototypes, because we've had some questions internally. I want to thank the mayor and the office to give us all the information we need. So we know the city department head names. We know the format that is requested by the city as far as the name of the department head, the actual department, city, North Hampton, we have the layout. But just a couple of questions that we had was logos, okay? I am assuming that we want the city logo, okay, that's sealed to be displayed on the name tag. Questions have come up around recognition of the school, not recognition of the school. Do we have the school logo on there? Do we not? Do we not, and we have recognition of the school by basically just saying that these name tags were made by the school? Or do we just truly have a city name tag, so the logo with the department head? So they went ahead and just gave some, like a prototype. I'm going to pass it around, okay? So just some options again, do we have the city logo and the school logo? Do we go with the city logo and just recognition of the school making the name tags? Or do we just simply have the city logo and it's a city name tag with no recognition from the school? So you're going to see some examples. The top example is Mr. Kalyan, back before he was chair. So you can kind of see what has already been included. It is some options. They use me as the example. So just passing around and I just want some info, recommendation. If anybody says, yes, one thing is better than another, I'd love to take that information back to the machine shop so they can report and control that order. So I'll come back to that once we have the chance and just give you an idea. So donations, we didn't have any donations officially. I've already recognized the big donation. That was from Smith College. So looking ahead, I already mentioned tomorrow I'll be down in Franklin, the MIA office. Next week, if you're unaware, is February break, so there's no school next week. You come back in February break, we have our next mindfulness session on that Tuesday that we come back. We then enter into March. We have the next scheduled Unit H negotiations on March 1st. That Friday is the monthly Connecticut Valley Superintendent Roundtable Luncheon at the Delaney House. Then we have two more weeks of mindfulness sessions. We should be wrapping up by that point and then transitioning into our work with city weeks proudly. On March 16th, many of the administrators will be spending the afternoon and evening down in Marlborough. I'll be there earlier for a lot of offices meeting, well, the board of directors meeting, and then the general membership meeting along the breakouts. So that's an annual tradition down there. And then finally, March 21st, we'll be back together as board trustees. I already mentioned, next month, the focus will be the FY '24 budget. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board. And again, before we leave tonight, if you don't mind, unofficial vote, just give me ideas of preferences on the name tag so I can have a sense of what the board wants and I'll give direction to the machine shop. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Joe?
Thank you. As is customary, I'll yield the beginning of my time to Mandy Wright, our student representative.
I just have a few things. We have our clubs, the yearbook. They are receiving pages for approval, taking some photos. And we recently got in a bind, the seniors, those seniors' players, the windows. And then the fundraiser, baseball is having a shop cloth sale. Brisbane Shop, the online gear shop, and for the baseball team, Money Race will help activities, clothing, equipment. And then the Viking Moonstone, the Smith Art and Writing Publications, they're having advertising campaign, students and staff, wholesale advertisements to be published in the spring 2023 edition of the Viking Moonstone. And that money will help support the publishing costs of the magazine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Current enrollment is 563 students. You can see the admissions year over year for February timeframe since 2019. So we are currently at 243 applications, 54 or 22.2% from North Hampton. Reminder that applications are due to Smith by March 15th and out of district tuition forms are due on April 1st. For the budget, Ms. Fairman and I began today building the school budget proposal to Dr. Lincoln Hooker so that he can add in district costs and things and give us feedback. We'll continue that tomorrow and then however additional time we need. But I think we're on track to be able to get that prior to that March board meeting so that we can get feedback and adjustments from Dr. Lincoln Hooker. We are at the interview phase for electrical instructor and animal science instructor. In athletics, just want to announce that the boys' basketball team is again the tri-county South League champions, two years in a row. And in wrestling, we're sending seven wrestlers to the state tournament, Mateo Henricks, Evan Latour, AJ Orogu, Matt Small, Forrest McSweeney, Ari Ginsberg, and Western Mass champion Alex Martinez. On the back, I do want to let the board know that the school and district report card announcement letters are being sent via email. They're scheduled to go out at 6:30 tonight and it's be posted on our website. I want to thank Mr. Parks for working with me on that data and those letters and working to get that up on the website as soon as possible. That's going out in English and Spanish. Some highlights for the board, and I did have Ms. Carver print out in color our report card. So you do have access to that. I do want to highlight, 98.3% of our teachers are licensed in their field of study, which is 4.9% higher than the state average. Ninth grade passing rate for us is 94%, which is 16.6% above the state average. And just to let you know that the data is that ninth grade students who pass all of their classes are four times more likely to graduate. 100% of our students complete the Mass Core requirement. I will say, we are helped a little bit in that because vocational schools are waived from the foreign language requirement. However, about 25% of our students do complete that requirement regardless of the waiver through Spanish classes. We're at 95.2% for your graduation rate, which is 5.4% above the state average. We decreased from 13% to 5% the students in the not meeting expectations category in ELA. We decreased from 12% to 8% the students in the not meeting expectations category in math. 47.2% growth in ELA, which is 2.7% below the state average, and we'll continue to focus on that. 54.6% growth in math, which is 4.6% above the state average. Currently, we're at the 26th percentile, but there is no accountability determination assigned to us due to COVID. So pending your questions, that's my report.
I just want to highlight the fact that admissions, talking about the concern statewide with admissions. And my point in my report were, I wish I could say yes to all students. I don't want to say no to anybody. Our current admissions policy says that we can accept 150 freshmen. We already have 243 applications. So that's already 93 students that we're going to have to say no to at some point. If you show us more seats and we have more capacity, we can obviously increase the opportunity. So I just want to point that out.
That was one of my questions actually, was what percentage of applicants we accept? So I'll do the math. That won't be hard.
I would just caution you because it has to be, you have to take into consideration people apply and don't accept their seat. Ultimately, we go down through about 80% of the kids who apply actually get offered a seat.
Okay, so it's about 80%?
Yeah, 80 to 85%.
And these highlights of the report card are fantastic and you must feel super proud of this school and the performance of your teachers and educational staff and students. I would love to see these students are compared to all high schools.
Correct.
I would love to see how we look compared to other vocational schools. I would expect us to be head of shoulders above, but that is just my own, you know, bias probably. So I, just for that, maybe those first, first four categories, I think, especially those that interest me. Well, actually, the teachers license in their field. Well, I'm kind of curious if it's harder to get licensed teachers in vocational schools or easier?
It can be a longer process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the passing rate, fantastic. 100% in Mass Core, that's exceptional. I mean, there's lots of high schools where they don't come close to that. But yeah, so I just would like to see that, how we can do it in both places.
I'll yield to Dr. Lincoln Hooker. I think in the past, he's done that yearly, so I would assume he'll probably be.
I can agree with that.
I would just want to point out one thing. Thank you. We are very proud of what the students are able to accomplish and the teachers, how they support the students and get them there. And I do just want to remind, our students double major. Okay, they are in academics and achieving this in 90 days.
Yeah.
So when you see that and other students are maybe in a double block for 90 days or a full 180-day course, you know, our students are doing this. You know, we do double up in English and math in ninth and 10th grade to try to give them that extra support. But they're really that week on, week off for them to be able to hold on to that learning and for the teachers to really track where they are and be able to circle back and reignite that because they're not doing it continuously is even more a point. And I think to Dr. Lincoln's hooker point, like his point earlier around why we use some of the selective criteria we do, that maturity level and that ability to handle that disruption in the continuous learning is very important and it is, it is unique to vocational school experience.
Excellent. Kim, is there anything on facilities? I know we covered a lot of it with the subcommittee meeting today. Is there any highlights you want to just inform us of?
I could talk about the air conditioning project in Seabill. We're going to post that, the bid package next week. Open it up in March 8th and hopefully.
A more building?
Seabill, yeah. So that would hopefully get done this summer. The window project's going to get continued next week. It's going to start Monday and be building, and they'll have that wrapped up before the week's over. Sidewalk reconstruction, we're going to hopefully go out to advertise for that in a few weeks. Got some decisions to make with the engineer, how we want things to look in the end, especially around AD buildings. The old recreation building is being renovated for classroom space for the animal science for our kids. It's all student done. So we still anticipate moving those kids in in March and then turning around and demoing the pig barn slash their classroom in April vacation so we can build the companion animal building and then simultaneously renovate their old classroom for that same program. That's about it.
Safety wise, as far as all this construction that's coming up here?
Yep.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, with all these students on campus and instructors and teachers, that safety is number one.
Yeah, the biggest thing we have, that's why we tried to get the demolition done during the break.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, everyone works together. If there's something going on, everyone works together to isolate the spot and make sure the kids aren't around.
Excellent. Thank you and your crew for the hard work they're doing.
And love the windows. Sitting here watching the report, I just, I just go under, absolutely gorgeous. Kim, I know that the business report isn't on our agenda.
My copy's in there because Crystal's out, but we do have a copy.
I wanted to just, if I could, call people's attention to the last page of the report.
Great.
Is that right? Thank you. So if you all could turn to the last page in this very thick packet. This is the, at the MAS, MAS conference, Dr. Lincoln Hooker and I went to the, what was the name of the session? Dr. Lincoln Hooker, the Worcester Finance, that's what, that's not the name of it.
Right.
But we came away with an understanding of, so it's like, it's this one with the, it's like the really thick one.
Yeah.
Yeah. We came away with an understanding of how our numbers could be presented much more clearly. All of this information is fantastic, but it's incredibly hard to digest. So we, we came away with that appreciation for simplifying it. And then I worked with Crystal for a couple hours to, we took the Worcester categories that they use in their budget, but of course, they're a much bigger school system, the second biggest one in the state. We're much smaller, so we were able to eliminate some categories. But if you can, if you look at these, in my mind, they make much more sense. So that's supposed to say salaries after that. So administration salaries, we've appropriated $1.1 million. Board of Trustees stipends, I'm like, $384,000? Really? Is it that? We can ask Crystal at the next meeting, but.
I think this is all, all the numbers in that cost are.
Yeah.
Not just salaries.
Right. We had talked about it being stipends, but yeah, so a conversation with her, but this is a start. So we have, she, someone else has prepared this report for us, which is awesome because it's a lot of work. But you can see like the instructional assistants, farm maintenance, retirement, and you can see teachers, obviously, our biggest line item there at 5.6 million. Vocational assistants. And then, so this is, that top section is all personnel. And then the bottom section is facilities, athletics, structural materials, utilities. So it's there. So this is our total budget, our $10 million budget, but grouped into categories that for the layperson, I think, are easier to understand and digest. So I'm really excited that this is here in our report and she will provide that for us quarterly.
Excellent.
Yeah. So we have it as a way, you know, to, to take all of this and make sense of it.
Perfect. Make sure you're working with Crystal.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dewey.
You're welcome.
So under new business, they have a motion to second to approve a one day in out-of-state field trip to Sonny Cobos Guild, April 11th, 2023, for 10th through 12th grade students in agriculture and criminal justice.
So moved.
Sergeant?
Yeah, should not say.
All right, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
They have a motion to second to approve payment FY '22 invoice to Cisco Company, $750.67 from Paul Mary Earth through Bobby.
Question?
Please.
Refresh my memory, why is this sort of item on our agenda when we sign off on warrants regularly? Why is this different than it needs to be here?
Because we're paying a previous fiscal year's invoice, so it has to come forward to the board.
Okay, so that's the short answer.
I can't comment specifically on that specific invoice. Why is it coming in late? I can't comment on that, I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
No, Jim, first. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is an important one right here. May I have a motion to second to approve percing a table of eight for the St. Patrick's Day breakfast for $228, that would be taken out of the trustee's account.
So moved.
Second.
Can you tell us a little bit about how this is important to our school?
Well, it is a public relations, one where the whole city does gather the St. Patrick's for this breakfast as well as there's floats being built to represent the city that go down the streets of Hoya. My father came tomorrow and it's in our blood that we did build a floats and supporting Irish heritage for many years. And the thing is that the school has been involved for many years earlier. We've built a lot of floats right here on campus. And so the thing is that the recognition of the whole city, the mayor will give her green, is just we're representing Smith's vocational as well as the other city departments. And there's banks and businesses that are there, but green is the color of the day.
Thank you.
So may I have a motion in a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second for discussion of possible action on the December 20th, 2022 motion to go up the bid for a 7 through 10 passenger vehicle? I believe that there, what happened in all that superintendent talked about, but apparently there was some concern about this was supposed to be a hybrid vehicle or electric vehicle. And Tim had done his best to go up the bid to try and get one under the specifications that we were trying to do for a smaller van to be able to utilize. It came up that the vehicle didn't seem to be available. On the original boat that came up, it was not really clear that this was going to replace the hybrid or electric vehicle. We did vote on a van, but again, we're going back to a gas vehicle that originally was supposed to be a hybrid or electric. And it went through because I thought it was going to be used for sports or carrying a large amount of children, but it isn't. This is a vehicle that's supposed to be used internally within the school. We did put four chargers here, right, two up front, Tim?
Eight.
And two up back?
Four.
Yeah. So we have the electric capability of the city. I know you talked about it in that meeting. It's going electric. We're trying. And the city of East Hampton was on the front page of the newspaper the other day talking about hiring a person to go all electric with their vehicles. I just think that. I just think that as chairperson, my own personal feeling is that we're going backwards. If you're buying gas vehicles, then electric line, and but I'll let the superintendent read through it.
Right, so the reason I asked for this to be a motion at the last, in December, I think it was, we have a current need for a student activity vehicle, not necessarily the size of one of our small buses, but something for a smaller vehicle to get a number of students to whether it's job sites, the rotations for help assisting, co-op interviews, so on and so forth. So something smaller than the actual large bus, but something bigger than a smaller vehicle. What also came to head at the same time was that we have been using our criminal justice SUV for that purpose. Now granted that SUV isn't as large as a bus, but it's also not as big as a more traditional van, but we were putting individuals in the backseat of the SUV cruiser. I want to thank Mr. Bianca for being observant enough. We actually were using it one particular day and we realized that any individual sitting in the backseat of that particular cruiser, they were locked in because it was a former cruiser. So from a safety standpoint and potential liability standpoint, if that cruiser ever got into an accident, the passenger in the backseat would not be able to get out of the vehicle and that was not a good thing. So we sort of banned that vehicle from the fleet of our vehicles for the time being and we were talking as a leadership team that we need something on campus for that particular need. Knowing that we've been striking out trying to get a hybrid van, that's why I brought it forward to the, to the board. The other component that I was just trying to be transparent about was even if we were able to get our hands on a hybrid vehicle, I wanted the board to be cognizant of the potential increase of the cost for a comparable vehicle and does the board support that or not, knowing that we have increased costs because of the fire? So that's why it came forward, to look at the need, we need our hands on something, you know, if we can't get our hands on a hybrid vehicle. I don't think there's any disagreement that nobody wants a hybrid vehicle. It was, we have a need for a student activity vehicle, we need something sooner than later. And if we're talking about it, I just want the board to be aware of the cost. I just want to be transparent again, as of this afternoon, I think Mr. Bianca could give you an update. The SUV that I just referenced, thank you to the Northampton Police Department, they actually took the vehicle back and they did modify it. So we are able to use it as a traditional SUV now. So they installed seat belts in the backseat, we are able to get out of the back doors now, so it is a more traditional SUV. So it, we are going to allow it to back into operation. It doesn't solve the problem if we have more than two or three students, it solves that problem, but if we have five to seven students, what do we do? We can't cram them all in the SUV. So this still is a need, I just want the board to be aware that that SUV is back in operation. So if that drives the conversation, if we're going to tend it one way or the other, I just want the board to have all the information.
My understanding from when we talked about this back in December was that we did want a hybrid vehicle, but were unable to find one and that there was an urgency to obtaining a vehicle. And so we agreed to broaden the specifications for it to include a gas powered one if we couldn't find a hybrid. So I think it's, we want a hybrid, that's our first choice, but, well, our first choice is getting a vehicle because I think that we approved it way before December. Like you've been wanting a vehicle for quite a while, I think.
I mean, the original motion that Mr. Kalin, you're referencing is the previous December, that'd be December of '21, which was then amended in December of '22. So yes, we've been looking for a vehicle for a long time.
So does the urgency in meeting the student need on campus now outweigh the commitment that I think we all share to, you know, a greener campus?
So as Dr. Lincoln Hooker was saying, at the department head meeting, we were sort of, this is, this is an issue we're having with a lot of departments. There's supply chain issues, particularly around electric vehicles and in the Commonwealth. So with some luck that you heard Chief Casper had was to look outside of Massachusetts and particularly look for states where there's less interest, so like more conservative states. New Hampshire, she found some vehicles, but also like Florida or places in the South, sometimes they'll have them on the lot where you won't be able to find them anywhere in sort of New England, except for maybe New Hampshire. So that's an idea, but this is something that we're all really, really struggling with, you know, we're all trying to green our fleets at the same time, at the same time that there's huge supply chain issues, particularly around electronics. So it's, you are not at all unique in this problem, unfortunately. And sometimes you have to make tough decisions to meet an immediate need, even though there's such a strong commitment to, for us all to really go in this direction.
Do you want to re- reduce this?
Yeah, that was actually my, my question was, so if we approved this in December to broaden, let them broaden the search, certainly prioritize a hybrid. We would all like to see that.
Yeah.
Fine, but we need to meet the, the needs of our kids, right? So we approved in December to broaden that, so can we just let things stay under, or do we need, should we vote again?
No, I don't think we need to vote again. It was a matter of, there was, do we? No.
Okay.
It was a matter of.
Wanting clarification on that.
Clarification of the hybrid.
Understood, understood.
Understanding the issue, I concur the vote. Go ahead. Report would.
Look in all the states.
If it needs, we get to fill the need.
So you will support a boat trip to Florida to pick up a hybrid?
I'm in. I get on the.
Understood.
He's free next week, Mr. Kalin.
I've been there, done that. Thank you.
Mike, are we, are we still looking for a Chrysler Pacifica then?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead, Tim, with the state, what the state can get us to fill the need for that vehicle that you had originally checked for the local dealer.
No, no, these are, I was looking at the combi's list, but for that specific Chrysler Pacifica.
Well, we're looking for, for price, but availability is more the need apparently for the vehicle.
Right, but so I, I can just go out to bid?
Yeah.
And, and put it on central register and call around, but for that vehicle?
Go ahead.
For that Chrysler Pacifica.
Well, I mean, it's, look at a comparable price. We know it's going to be more expensive if, if it's a hybrid.
Yeah, I, I, that's what it is, I just don't.
Yeah.
I guess I just, I just want real clarification on what vehicle we're looking for.
Priority would be a hybrid van that holds seven to 10 passengers. Okay.
But not limited to hybrid? If we can't find a hybrid?
Correct. Hybrid preferred, but not limited to.
Hybrid or electric?
Limited to Chrysler?
It's what I was asking to find.
Yeah.
Does it have to be?
Hybrid or pure electric?
Search to a make?
There are other vans that are, there's like Toyota has one too, I think.
Yep, but I was specifically asked to find that, that. So if we're going to open it up, I can, I can do that, but.
Is there a reason why it was being limited to Chrysler?
No, no, the, the, the vehicle we looked at initially, it happened to be a Chrysler hybrid, that was gas electric and it held all the people that we needed and it filled the need at that time, but it is more expensive. It's probably $10,000 and $12,000 more than a standard vehicle.
But is it okay if the search gets brought into something other than Chrysler? Because there are other minivans that are hybrid.
Yep. Definitely. Well, it's a need situation. The next one is, may I have a motion of second discussion, vote on December 20th motion? Oh, no, that's it. Okay, that's on there. Sorry.
Page two.
Yep. May I have a motion of second discussion for a standardized annual, oh, longevity for all employees, five or more years, $750, 10 or more years, $2,000, 15 or more years of service, $2,500. Do you want to talk to that?
So we move first and then, so moved.
Yep, okay.
Second?
Okay, yeah. So at our meeting last April, when we voted to approve this year's budget, we also voted to have a discussion about longevity benefits for nonrepresented employees to the February board meeting when we would have a clearer sense of the revenue picture. I would like to make a motion now that we refer consideration of the longevity benefits to our negotiation subcommittee, our newly formed negotiating subcommittee, and request that a proposal is presented to the full board at our next meeting. The reason why I am making that proposal is we were just given the information today with the longevity.
Struggle.
Right, the benefits that are being paid and not paid to the different employees and realizing, I, I wanted to see what it looked like in Northampton, in the Northampton Public Schools, because there are also a city, you know, city department and just make sure we're addressing all of the questions that we might have around it and then bring a proposal that has been, is fully formed and has been completely explored.
So we, we.
That's my motion.
Okay.
That we refer this to the, to the negotiations subcommittee.
Right. All in favor?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion of second to begin a capital campaign for raising money for the school? Rip, do you want to talk to that?
Uh, sure.
Yeah. Okay, motion?
So motion.
Second.
Just, well, for instance, take the article in the paper recently about, what was her name, Rebecca Walunas from plumbing, how she's cracked the glass barrier in terms of her trade as a, as a woman plumber, that I think we need to reach out to our alumni, our stakeholders, everybody involved, city beyond our sending districts, that we need to start raising money internally because we're not necessarily going to get all the money from grants in the state and the feds. And I think it would be worthwhile endeavor to do that, to actually hopefully build some pride in the school, toot our own horn and let people know what we're all about and hopefully they'll buy into it and contribute. I just think it's time. And along with that, I had, you know, we've been, we've been struggling with grant writing and we've been doing it in-house and God bless Joe and his staff and everybody on board doing the grant writing. Maybe we can duck that position and if we went outside the box and hired say a capital, capital campaign manager, maybe they had expertise and also grant writing. Just throwing it out there for discussion.
So would this be a limited campaign or sort of like an annual campaign? Would it be sort of directed towards a certain?
Good question. I want to get the discussion going so we can start fine tuning what, we know we have a need for money and we have a needy need for money for the horticulture rebuild, which we need to figure out. And that kind of got my, the wheels turning in regards to where are we going to find some money? So I'm not specifically advocating that that be for the horticulture building, but maybe it may, may need, may need to be. I want to, you know, get the conversation going to start fine tuning what we should do.
Make a brick.
Pardon? When I was in college, the president went around to everyone and said, please buy a brick.
Yeah, buy a brick, there you go.
And that was a alumni break, so new building, figure how many bricks and let's buy a brick.
Yeah.
I have a question to add to it. I, I'm really interested in increasing the breadth of our scholarships that we offer to students to make sure that all of the shops are covered in, in the academic areas as well. And I, I know that that, that a scholarship fund is different from a capital campaign, but I'm also thinking, you know, if we're going out and making contact with folks, if there could be some coordination between that or if I'm a, like, so Becca Walunas is, is young and just getting started, she might not be able to make a contribution to a capital.
Right, right, but.
But she could make a donation to a scholarship, she could have a scholarship in her name. So I'm just wondering about the feasibility of combining efforts or, I, I don't know how that works.
My suggestion is that, that we approve this.
Yeah.
And then we form a committee.
Yeah.
To take all these ideas that are starting to roll here.
Yeah.
And collect them and then bring it back to the board.
Yeah.
To, to, that's what I recommend. So we've approved it, I'm just kind of, as far as.
So do we amend this action or discussion slash?
I think he's saying no.
I think we've got the, this has got the content.
Okay.
In regards to leave it the way it is and then take this and.
Build on it.
Build on it with a committee. Any, any thoughts on that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think keeping the motion as is would empower me to.
Right.
Do the next step. I would agree with the mayor. I think my first question was sort of what the mayor asked, you know, are we looking at a, a specific capital campaign project or is this sort of an ongoing? I, I know the struggles, again, I keep thinking Mr. Bianca over the years, trying to get the alumni association up and running. We've tried alumni weekend, we've tried this, we've tried that. It's, it's difficult. And I just know, in working with the Hilltown Health Network, with the potential health center, they've actually went out and hired a campaign manager and I think they're going to face some difficulties. It has a focused campaign initiative for one particular project, so I think people are more willing to donate when there's a specific goal in mind. You know, you see the thermometer on the front yard, you know, that thermometer's for a particular project. So those are my, just my questions that have to be answered, but I think if the board, board's not creating this, I think those questions have to be answered within, within a committee. I would agree, there's nobody on staff right now that has, A, the expertise and B, the time to take on a capital campaign, let alone, you know, writing grants, which is why we're looking for the grant writer. So I, I've already made my opinion known that if we have a capital campaign, we need to have a professional overseeing it, which again, costs money and we have to seed that money from somewhere. So, you know, we want to raise money, but we need money to raise the money. So I just put that out there.
I have one more question for the superintendent. How does Friends of the Farm relate to this, like charitable work?
My vision, the onset of the fire and even before that, and I sort of got this idea a few years ago, Monty Tech up in Pittsburgh, they're a large regional milk school, I think they have 19 member districts, and they wanted to create a vet assisting program. So they did, but the superintendent at the time, her school committee said, go for it, apply for the vet assistant program, but we're not going to give you a dime as far as construction cost. So she had to figure out how to raise the money. So Monty Tech has a nonprofit organization, very similar to our Friends of the Farm, and she used that particular charity group to raise all the money. So the money was funneled through that charity group, given back to the school as they were building the, the building. So I thought, gee, we already have Friends of the Farm, so can we be distant before the fire? We already had a vision to expand the animal science program, could we do that? I had meetings with the, the individuals who were involved with Friends of the Farm. The challenge is there's no expertise within the Friends of the Farm to take that initiative and run with it. They have very little membership and their membership, they just don't have that skill set, it's a special skill set. So I think we have the, the structure in place, we don't have the people in that structure to take that and run with it.
Where did Monty Tech get the expertise?
I'm not sure who was on there within that group.
Yeah.
But they did a lot of fundraising, talking about selling bricks, because this was a vet assisting capital campaign, they had a photo booth where you can bring your dog in to lunch and have a photo with your dog. They had a lot of bake sales, they had a lot of fundraisers, but, and they had a, they had to raise, I think, two and a half to three million dollars.
So maybe something, if we formed this committee to reach out to them, to say, what did you learn?
Well, the other thing on our Friends of the Farm, that's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we already have that in place.
Yeah, so I was wondering how that connected to this.
So we have the structure, we just need the people.
Right.
That's, I've been striking out, I know we keep talking about different ideas, there's been a lot of wonderful ideas, we need the person who can take it and make it happen.
All right, question. We have this entity, Friends of the Farm. I know nothing about it, I've seen no publicity about it, I've seen no reach out from this group about it. What, what are they doing?
It was originally many, many, many years ago that the farm was threatened to be abolished.
Yeah.
And it was a collective group put together called Friends of the Farm. They turned around and put the 501(c)(3) together and they put together the money to, through that vehicle to bring the money back that the school didn't have to sustain the farm. So that's where it was born, but it's. So that's where it was formed, but it's been kind of run very loosely since, we need more structure, as you said.
Well, that's where I'm going with this. Here's what you've just said, Mr. Kaling, we need more structure to that entity and get the word out there, and, you know, Dr. Andy brought up the fact that we have this entity, you know, yes, we certainly need a subcommittee to start figuring this all out.
The entity is, technically is, it's not directly tied to the school. I don't have any operational oversight of it.
It's a separate view.
And we have to keep that separation.
Yeah.
So during the transition of the last election, and with the vision of animal science and trying to expand, I had conversations with Mr. Fitzgerald, the former trustee, and he's, he's involved, but again, he has a lot of great skill set, but his skill set is not in marketing and-
Fundraising.
Fundraising. And that's, no disrespect to Mr. Fitzgerald, he has a love for the school, a love for the, the farm, which is bonus points, so he has the passion, it's just, we all have passions, it's just, we don't know how to do it.
Who is the president of Friends of the Farm? Do you know?
Well, like I said, there's Mr. Fitzgerald, is Mr. Cotton still on that or not?
I don't know who the president is.
It needs to be just a-
And prior to their involvement, it was a former superintendent who's now been retired, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we do have a motion in a second. May, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me too.
So where do we go from here?
We're, we're gonna forward committee, but this is the vehicle. Future business, March 21st, regular board meeting here, April 11th, the same, May 16th, the same. Upcoming events, March 22nd, Program Advisory Committee Dinner and Meetings, 6 o'clock in the cafeteria, Your Honor, we'd love to have you there.
And Dr. Pearson, if you're as well.
If you're here, love to have you.
Get for a treat, a delicious meal.
April 4th through 6th, 2023, FFA State Convention, they changed the locations at the Sheridan Framingham Hotel and Conference Center. April 13th, 2023, MAVA Outstanding Vocational Student Awards banquet, Mechanics Hall in Worcester. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You're done.
Thank you, everybody.